...among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office, that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all our citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in your hearts and thoughts. Amen.
All right, at this point, I'll throw it over to the planning board to open their meeting.
This is the planning board meeting of November 5th, 2019, and we're here tonight with a joint meeting with the select board because the planning board has had no alternate members since Kara DeHo, and I see Kara's here tonight, became town clerk. And the planning board has had to postpone some special permit hearings because not all board members have been able to attend the meeting, so this has become a problem. So, we have two candidates here tonight, and we're lucky, we're very happy to have two people participate, and one is Kelly Decali and one is Ellen Sardillo. And they spoke to the planning board at our last planning board meeting. So, I think first, I'll ask each candidate to speak and introduce themselves, and then we'll have a period of questions by both boards, and then nominations, and then we'll have a vote by the planning board and select board. And then, now that Kara's here tonight, we'll swear in the planning board alternate, and then the planning board will reconvene downstairs, continue its meeting. So if we take them, the candidates, by, we'll ask Kelly to come up and speak, and if you could just tell us about yourself, and if you could give us your name and address, please?
Oh, sure. My name is Kelly Decali, 7th Plaza Street.
Pull the mic right to you.
Closer, please.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much. My name is Kelly Decali, and I'm here for the position of the planning board alternate. Currently, I am the zoning board of appeals clerk, and I was just looking to further get involved in the town of Carver. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Questions from the board of selectmen?
Do you want to hear from the other candidate first, or just go right into questions?
I'd say we question each as they hear.
I do have one, if someone else doesn't want to go first.
No, go ahead.
Okay. As being an alternate, there'll be times where you'll be, you know, having a vote during a planning board meeting. So, my question is, you have an applicant coming before you on the board who has fulfilled each and every single requirement according to our bylaws, which you guys are supposed to be withholding, and has even gone beyond what's required by the bylaws, but you personally have a problem and dislike of the project that's being presented. How do you vote and why?
That's a really great question. I think you should vote for the moral and ethical interest of the town, the residents, and I think you should obey the bylaws. And if you have to withhold your vote because you have such strong feelings that would impede your decision, then I think that would speak highly of you as a person to abstain from the voting. However, on the other hand, if you are an alternate and you're able to make a decision based on the bylaws and maturely put your feelings aside and vote based on honesty and the laws of the town, then you should do so. I think that depends on the person, whether or not what he or she can do. I don't think that either-or answer is a wrong answer, but I think it speaks for both sides what you feel strongly about. If you feel that you cannot justify and vote based on alternate, then abstain from the vote or vice versa.
Thank you very much.
Other questions from the board?
Ladies, for the microphone?
Yeah.
I just wanted to know what you felt the role of the planning board is in our town, or in any town? That's a hard one.
The role of the planning board is to collaboratively work together for subdivisions of the town land by protecting the town land and the development for the town, ensuring that petitioners who are requesting the special permit are following the town bylaws in accordance with the Massachusetts general laws.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you very much for coming. I do appreciate this opportunity. Our bylaws, have you read the bylaws within our town that relate to, it's quite a document?
It's quite a document, yeah. They were, I briefly ran through the planning board bylaws, which haven't been updated since 2008, but I also read the zoning board bylaws, which are already updated since 2018, and they're both saved on my document on my computer, so I do review them. So, for instance, I'll give an example, just being a clerk for the zoning board of appeals, when I see that there's a petitioner coming in who is requesting to be in front of the zoning board of appeals, I usually read the section of what they're requesting for the special permit, just to get a little bit more familiarity for this. And I would do so also for the planning board alternate, so I would educate myself ahead of time.
Thank you. And part of the bylaws, it goes to interpretation of when the bylaws were created. How do you, how would you interpret, I'm just going to put it out there, the solar bylaws about being next to residential homes or whatnot? Have you decide, have you come to any decision on the interpretation of what the bylaws say related to screening and whatnot? I'll just put it that way.
Yeah, that's a really good question. So, I haven't been formally, I didn't look thoroughly for the solar, for the next to an RA, but I mean, that's something, again, that if I do get the position, that I would further educate myself. How did I know that solar panels were going to be talked about?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
It's no surprise.
Anyone else? Sure.
I was going to ask you about the roles of the planning board as well, so I won't ask you again, but I do want to thank you for volunteering your time for the town, because so many.
Thank you for your time.
Certainly needed. Thank you.
Over to the planning board. You have a question?
With there being so many openings on boards and committees, why the planning board?
So, why the planning boards? First of all, the planning board is incredibly fascinating, as you guys know, you guys know. So, you guys work collaboratively together to provide an orderly and ethical decisions for the town development. Why I want to be a part of that, I want to be a part of those decisions. I want to be a part of that collaboration where we work together as a team to protect the town development and the land and the decisions that are being made for the town moving forward for our future. And again, just being an alternate is to be making these transparent and ethical decisions and also just hearing input from the petitioners and asking those questions and educating myself and then be more familiar with the solar projects or the planning board bylaws on the website.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
How would you like to seek Carver develop in the future?
So, that's a good question. I'm all for the growth of Carver by promoting small businesses, protecting the land, promoting, you know, residencies, new families coming in, so anything, I think, for the interest and the benefit of the town to promote transparency and growth and productivity would be, would be great.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Again, I have one question. If you were able to get nominated for this and assume the position of the alternate for the planning board, number one, it's a two-part question. Number one, are you on the understanding of the commitment that is being asked to be on that board, knowing that your position would be special permits, but there's other things that you'll be at and you'll hear? And number two, if there was a vacancy that became on this board, would you be willing to seek that full-time position?
So, to answer your first question, I'm very highly committed to being the planning board alternate, and I would do the best job in hearing the input of petitioners, educating myself, and again, just continuing to make honest and transparent decisions for your collaboration and for your team and for the future. You know, that's a really great question. I would hope so, that I wouldn't let that moment pass up, you know? If I was so familiar, if I was becoming familiar with the planning board committee and opening does happen as a possibility, yes, I would hope that during that moment I could.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any?
I do have a question for you. Do you want to go?
Go right ahead.
So, first of all, I'd like to thank you very much for filling in, keeping notes one night. I believe that may have been our historical quickest.
It was the quickest.
But I do want to thank you for having done that probably at the last minute, too. And my question for you would be, were you to fill the role on the zoning board of appeals as clerk, would you still be continuing that, or would you, given the chance to be on the alternate, would you stepping down for that?
I would do, I would do both. I, I love, this is going to sound corny, I love typing, I love doing administrative work. I like hearing about the zoning board of appeals. I kind of found my niche, I think it's as interesting as the planning board, but I would do both, for sure.
Now, probably have to ask, that would not be a conflict of interest, given that the planning board were to make a decision based on somebody coming through hardship to the zoning board of appeals, where would that put her this time in that?
She has no role in the ZBA but for taking the minutes of the ZBA, so she has no vote in there, so there's no conflict that's there. And if something's in the executive session on there, it's only going to be in there for litigation. If it's in there for litigation, it's not involving any of the boards at that particular point.
Great to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Quick question. First, thanks for applying for this. We appreciate it. Have you been on any other boards or any committees in the town?
Just, I have a history of being on the Carver Recreation Committee. Unfortunately, I had to step down due to my daughter having a kidney transplant.
Any other questions? Do you want to hear from both candidates first, or vote on each as they hear?
Could I actually just make an addendum?
Actually, you're going to hear from both of them.
Because we're just going to vote for one, so you've got to hear both.
And can I just actually make an addendum?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, my bad. I thought we, I thought there were two openings.
No, just one.
Can I actually just make an addendum as well?
Sure.
So, I also think it's important that the planning board alternate, as well as I think the planning board members, kind of educate themselves as well for when a petitioner comes in for a special permit. I know I was here last month or a few weeks ago when we were talking about the two alternate members, and I think, you know, educating yourself on the laws is great, but also the input of the petitioners. It's not an easy thing for petitioners to come and sit here in front of a board and articulate themselves and justify their special permit. But I think that if the alternate and the members educates themselves as well as the rationale for the special permit, that is incredibly helpful. I know the last meeting, you had an individual petitioner who was looking for a kennel to provide services for service dogs, for veterans, and just going home and reading about service dogs, and the education that, you know, I reviewed after the meeting was incredible, that how much what she'll be doing in helping our veterans and what service dogs provide for the veterans, and how it decreases suicide rates and decreases mental health symptoms. So, just maybe having that knowledge before, I could have asked her so many more questions, but that's also something incredibly helpful for the planning board and the alternate to do, is just completely educate themselves before a petitioner comes and speaks.
All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we'll hear from Ellen.
Well, hello. My name is Ellen Sardillo. I have lived in Carver for 44 years, and I've watched it grow. I think there was a mere 6,000 or 7,000 people living in Carver when we first came, and now there is close to 12,000, I believe. I sort of have found my niche later in life. I'm retired, sort of kinder. I'm on the recreation board. I'm also involved with a veterans group called Waits for Vets, which they, is not being funded by the government right now, and so I've been helping them find waits for veterans. Apparently, government hasn't given them the money to buy the waits, and I've been trying to round up. I've been pretty successful in helping them find the waits for these vets. I've learned so much on the recreation committee. It's a wonderful group of people. We've been given a big task lately and pros and cons, but I feel like I have been part of a bigger picture, and it's made me realize how much I love being part of this great town. I've, you know, from cranberries to iron ore, the history of this town is magnificent. The beauty of this town is incredible, and I enjoy being part of that. It just gives me an excitement that I've never felt before. I went to school for dental assisting and frankly, wasn't as exciting as all this has been. I've met some wonderful people in this town. I've watched different people come through the years, and I feel that Carver really is starting to get it together, and it's just a great place to be, and I really want to be part of everything I can in this town to help it go forth into future years. I'm not as well-educated as Kelly. She did a fantastic job up here speaking. I'm learning as I go, and I worked for several newspapers in my past, and one of the questions used to come up, well, you know, why aren't there any businesses in Carver that stay there? Businesses seem to come, businesses seem to go, and I never could answer that question, and I've always been looking for that answer. So, I'm hoping that maybe by being involved in the town, I will find out and help promote different businesses that add to our economy and add to the town as a place not only to live, but to shop and to thrive. And I think that Carver has great potential in being part of that. And I, once again, I've met some terrific people through being part of the recreation committee, and I've found my retirement niche, and I really want to, if I don't get picked for this board, I'm going to keep trying for every other board I can, because I think it's very important as an American citizen to really learn about your government in the particular area that you live in, and to help promote it in every way possible to make it fruitful to our future. And I don't know if I can answer the questions as technically as Kelly did, she did wonderful, but I'm willing to give it a try.
All right, we'll start with the select board again.
Start that in this time?
Sure. Mr. Baldwin?
Similar question. Have you been reading over our bylaws that will be governing the planning board?
Not as carefully as perhaps I should after listening to her and realizing. I was more looking into the population, what's happened in Carver since the beginning and how it's progressed, because I need to learn more. And I'm always eager to learn something new. I've thought about going back to school, but I find that just living life is plenty to teach us all a little bit more about government, and especially with what's going on in Washington. I'm like glued to the TV, and that's something I've never been, but I just feel so strongly now that this wonderful country of ours should go forward and help out those that need helping and bring forth business that is, you know, positive to everybody and just be courteous and, you know, care about the people that you're with. I don't know if that's the answer you're looking for, but I do want to learn about the zoning laws, and I want to keep this town as beautiful as it is.
Okay. Sarah?
Thanks. I'll just ask you, thank you to both of you, actually, I forgot to say that earlier, for stepping up. I just wanted to ask you what I asked Kelly to, but before I do, I just want to add that you are aware the planning board can't like make businesses come here? They can, they can write zoning bylaws that maybe might be more attractive, but they can't actually make them?
Okay, and once again, I am learning. I apologize for my lack of knowledge, but I, you know, coming to the recreation committee in the beginning, someone actually suggested that I get involved in the town and get involved with civic groups. And at first, I was like, you know, what do I have to add to this? And I'm finding out slow but sure that I am, you know, adding to it, and I am so proud of the work that we have done. It just really, it gives me, I don't know, I'm Jewish, there's a word, nachas, I don't know how to explain it in English, but it's like a wonderful feeling from the inside out. And since becoming part of the recreation committee and, you know, learning more about this wonderful town, I just, I am so proud to be here. I really am.
No, that, I just didn't want you having that misconception, and I didn't know that either when I got on the planning board, so.
Okay, so being honest, but I learn quickly.
Yeah, yeah. So, my question is, what do you feel is the role of the planning board in?
Well, I, you know, as Kelly said, you know, businesses that want to come into the, not businesses, because now, now I'm correcting myself, so you have learned something.
No, well, businesses come in, and they do go through the planning board.
Right, so to make sure that they do follow the bylaws, to be able to discuss with the planning board and listen and learn, you know, what is legal, what is not legal, how do you go about, you know, the different situations that come forth to the planning board, and learning about the different bylaws that allow a business either to come in or not be able to come in.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Townsend?
Again, I think Sarah and I had the same questions, so I'm not going to re-ask it, but I just, I do want to thank you, both of you, for stepping up and volunteering for the town, and we appreciate it.
It's an honor, really. It really is an honor. It's an honor to be here tonight. Whatever you folks decide, I'm happy with. I will find another committee. If you guys don't want me and love me, I will find somebody else that will, because I, I'm not going to stop here.
Love you on the recreation.
Okay.
Thank you, Ellen. Mr. Dunham?
Okay, Ellen, again, thank you. Kelly, I forgot to say thank you for coming and applying, too. It's great to see people coming forward to want to be on the various committees in the town and want to help the town out. So, I'll go with the same question. You've got an applicant coming before you, you have a voting membership on the board because due to someone being absent, the applicant has gone ahead and met every single requirement of the bylaws, and has even gone above and beyond what those requirements are, but you personally don't like that type of project, whatever it happens to be. Big, a big box store going in or something, or we've talked about solar or solar. You have a, you do not like that type of project. How do you vote even though the applicants met all the requirements?
Well, I think first is to discuss with the whole committee what my feelings are, and maybe someone can inform me or educate me on what I, I don't think they should be here because of. But I think that if I really had something against what they were trying to do, then I would abstain from it, because I, it wouldn't be fair to, you know, make a judgment just because everybody else did it. I'm my own person, and I've always been sort of outspoken about, you know, what my feelings are. My voice hasn't come out yet in the recreation, but it's there, believe me, and I will fight for what is right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, back to the planning board. Jen, do you have anything?
Same question. There are so many openings on boards and committees. Like you said, you're willing to go anywhere. Why start at the planning board?
I think it's such an important part of the town to be able to look at the bylaws that the town permits and go along with that program and not, you know, listen to naysayers and I just, you know what, I'm not educated enough to answer this question, so I'm not going to stop making up stories, because I just, I need to learn more about it. That's my main point, is I can't answer that question without really knowing enough information. That wouldn't be fair, you know? So, give me the information, and I will honestly tell you, you know, sometimes my honesty gets me in trouble, but I am an extremely honest person, and if I believe in something, I will fight to the ends of the earth for it.
Wasn't meant to be a trick question.
No, I know, I know, I know. I mean, I'm trying to answer that question as best I can, and I can't say I'm as educated as anybody here in that, but I, once again, I am learning. This is frankly, new to me. Coming on board last year was wonderful. I was, I was in the Kiwanis in Carver at one time under Jim Grimes. I was in charge of public relations. So, I am varied in what I have learned over the years. I even worked on one of the voting committees here in town for one of the votes with our last town clerk, and that was very exciting, too. Just be, being part of this is such an honor. You know, I am frankly thrilled to be on the recreation committee and to be part of such a big plan there, but I want more. I just want more. I'm hungry for more.
Thanks.
Thank you. How would you like to seek Carver develop in the future?
I would like it to be a town that is not just known for its cranberries and its Ediville and the fair. Those are wonderful things, but I think that we really have more to add to being a great town with a great government, and I mean, when I look at, when I, when I look at the recreation committee and I see all of these wonderful things that are going into our playground that are going to be state-of-the-art, and people are going to say, my God, why don't we have that in our town? I want other towns to come and look at us and say, why can't we be more like Carver? Because Carver has done so many great things.
Thank you. Anybody else on the planning board have any questions?
I'm going to ask you the same question I asked the previous applicant, but first of all, I have to thank you very much for your honesty. It's hard to come in front of us and say, you know, well, I don't break it out, so I have to thank you for that. That says a lot about you, Kevin. Same question I asked the previous applicant. If you were able to obtain this position as you are, that you're familiar with the obligation that you're going to have to sit through all those special permits and other things that go on with it. If there becomes a vacancy on the board that somebody resigns or leaves, would you be willing to step up and take that position?
I can tell you honestly, yes.
That was.
That was easy.
Anyone else? Kevin?
I can't ask you the same question, because you're not serving on the, sorry?
No, no.
But I will say, I appreciate the fact that you are sitting there, because myself, almost 10 years ago, I sat there and raised my family in this town and was not aware of exactly what the planning board was, and wanted to give to my town, wanted to be a part of it. And by being an alternate, I believe I gained a great deal of knowledge, and working with the rest of the members of the planning board feel very, very new. the rest of the members of the planning board, feel very, very fortunate to be a part of something bigger than myself, so thank you for that. I would like to know what you think your, your contribution would be that would go above and beyond.
Okay, well, I found out early in life that I was meant to do civic things. Many years ago, I worked for Jordan Marsh and there was a lot of unrest because the main stores were union and the satellite stores which I worked at were not. And for some reason, two people came in one day and approached me and said, we heard about you and we'd like you to help us start a union for the, you know, for the stores. And I took that on. Unfortunately, it didn't go through, but the woman that was in charge of the union came to me and said, you should have a life in civic duty because you really do care about other people and you're very honest. And when I told my father this, he said, oi, remember Jimmy Hoffa? So, you know, I had to take a long look, but I did, I was grateful that I had the opportunity to do that because it did make me realize that I love civic things, I love helping people and, you know, following the rules and regulation with that.
I thank you for your passion and especially thank you for your role in this.
Thank you so much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, I'll just apologize, I apologize for my confusion in calling for a vote before you had a chance to speak.
If someone told you about me, I'm sure.
No, it just demonstrates how long it's been since a position's been contested and that we've actually had to decide between two candidates as opposed to, I just automatically assumed two candidates, two positions.
You're going to see me either way, Mr. Clark, so, you know, the now or later, so take your pick.
All right. All right, I guess, thank you very much.
Okay, my pleasure.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now I'm looking for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Kelly DeCarly as our next applicant.
I'll second.
So, we have a motion and a second. We do have another candidate, so do we have a?
I'd like to nominate Ellen Sodillo for alternate for the planning board.
So, we have a motion and a second?
I'll second that.
So, we have a motion and a second, so, all right, let's take, let's take a vote for Kelly DeCarly.
Are we going to take a vote based on the planning board or are we going to take a vote based on this as a whole?
I believe the last time we did this, it was with the, it's the whole group, the select board and the, and the planning board.
You're voting on both candidates and whoever gets the most votes.
All right, those in favor to elect Kelly DeCarly as a planning board alternate, raise their hand. So, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, okay. And those in favor to select Ellen Sodillo, please raise a hand. Yeah, one, that's it, one, okay. So, it looks like Kelly is our next planning board alternate. And again, I thank both, both ladies for coming up tonight and they both spoke, spoke very well, better than I did 10 years ago when I was in your position, that's for sure.
Thank you all.
Thank you guys very much for coming forward. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Want to close your meeting temporarily to move downstairs?
It says, on this paper here, the joint session with the board of selectmen, we have the Complete Streets presentation by SerpEd. We did have that at our last meeting and we did, and the planning board recommended unanimously for the complete street policy, to refer it to.
So, the presentation we're about to get, you've already seen?
We have already seen it, yes.
That's up to you then as to what you'd like to do.
I think that, I thought we were just going to go downstairs after this and, but I did want to tell you that we did recommend this unanimously. And thank you for having us up here tonight and helping us select a new alternate planner.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
All right, we move now to citizen participation. This is a 10 minutes that we allow at the, during the early portion of our meetings for citizens that would like to address the board. We ask them to limit their comments to about three minutes to allow other people to speak. Was there anyone that wanted to address the board this evening? Yes, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Donna Marie Foran, 278 South Meadow Village, Carver. I just wanted just to come before the board to remind the board that you're all invited to the gala event on November 15th at the Century House in Akushnet for the Educational Foundation Board for Old Colony Volk. The tickets are on sale presently. And then the other thing is, I just wanted just to announce that I was going to continue to do the wreaths across Carver for the veterans for the cemetery and the laying of the wreaths will be on December 7th, which happens to be Pearl Harbor Day as well. But we are looking for donations for the wreaths and if anybody has any questions, they can contact me.
So, you're looking for cash donations to, for the purchase of the wreaths?
Either cash donation or if they wanted to provide a wreath with a bow on it, we're accepting the wreaths as well.
Okay.
Either way, whatever's the easiest for anyone, that would be really helpful.
Any particular size restrictions if they want to?
No, I'm not fussy. Last year, we couldn't find enough wreaths and so we ended up having to make about 100 of them ourselves, so this year, we're fine with whatever we have to, we get for a donation, so, we're not fussy.
Okay.
And it was very well received by families that came to Carver that hadn't been to their family's graves in a long time and they were thrilled to think that Carver could turn around and think of their family member when they're not in the town and they happen just to be here for the holidays, so.
And how can you be, how can you be reached again?
DonnaForan@gmail.com or my phone number, 774-454-3392. Thank you.
And people can contact the selectmen's office to get referred as well?
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Was there anyone else that wanted to address the board this evening? There being no one, we will move on to the Complete the Streets Grant Presentation with SerpEd.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm not quite sure which microphone it's used. Sorry, put it over here.
Why don't we be the one over there?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Jackie Jones. I'm a principal transportation planner at SerpEd, the regional planning agency for Southeastern Mass.
I'm sorry, could you hold the microphone up?
Sorry about that.
It's for people at home.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair. So, what we're going to talk about tonight is sort of an overview of SerpEd and what our role is with the Complete Streets program and then we're going to talk about what a complete street is and then the overall funding program and then we're going to go over the policy. That was what the planning board was referring to earlier that they had recommended for approval. So, SerpEd is Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District. We are the regional planning agency for Southeastern Mass, which is 27 communities. And our sort of role is to assist communities with a variety of planning issues. For this specific program, we are assisting Carver with developing a policy that will, that will make you eligible for the Complete Streets funding program, which I'll get into a little bit more detail about later. So, what is a complete street? A complete street is a facility that safely and conveniently transports all manners of transportation. So, people hear complete streets and generally they think bicycles and pedestrians, but it's really about accommodating all roadway users. So, bicycle and pedestrians are definitely a focus of that program, but it also includes trucks, automobiles, any, anything that might need, anyone or anything that might need to get from A to B. That's sort of our typical complete street. We like to show the buses and transit and I know transit's not a big thing in Carver, but it's definitely something to think about. So, the elements of complete streets that are sort of eligible for the funding are sidewalks and crosswalks, curb extensions, bicycle lanes, safety improvements to the road, lighting, signage, things like that. And so, the funding program is really sort of the carrot to get you to adopt these sort of policies in your town. Massachusetts really sees a need for accommodating people, not just for local trips, but also help, to help people get to jobs and other things like that, so they developed this funding program. As you can see, it's very popular in Massachusetts. All the ones that have color are at some level in the program. Carver, we're hoping will be at the beginning stages very soon. So, where you're at right now is, this is a three-tiered program. So, tier one is just sort of learn about the program and adopt a policy, which I will get into more details about the policy in a minute. And then you develop a prioritization plan, what projects are important to Carver. For that, we sort of measure all of your roads and we develop some sort of spreadsheet like this that says where, where things are feasible, what your best options would be and what would, what would be your best bang for your buck. And it's usually in a five-year time period and for that, once you've developed that, you can apply for funding, which is up to $400,000 per year per community. And how that program is distributed is through this construction funding program, which is very similar to Chapter 90, which I'm sure you've heard of before. So, the policy. What this is, is basically the town is committing to following certain practices and best practices and commitments to making their town more, more friendly for all users. So, there's four parts of the policy, vision and intent, core commitment, best practice and implementation. And Mastot will take your policy and score it out of 100. The policy that we're presenting you tonight either scores around, is similar to a policy that we've used in four other towns and that we generally think will score around a 94 or 95. And you have to score above an 80 to advance, but really they want to see you in the 90s. And the vision and intent is very, very basic. It's your introduction, it's your, talks about Carver a little bit, talks about the program a little bit, and then you sort of get into the core commitment, which is really where the meat of it is. It talks about what sort of users and modes you're trying to incorporate on your roads, what sort of projects you're looking to do and this part is sort of important, the exceptions. So, in this document, it talks about, a lot about the character of Carver and how Carver is rural and not every road in Carver can have, can accommodate two sidewalks, two bike lanes, two roadways. And the exception process is kind of, kind of tailors it to Carver. So, it acknowledges the limitations in space, it also lets you accommodate things like wetlands. This is sort of, and it's developed by the town. This is not a process that is imposed on you, it's something that the town develops itself. So, you have control over that process. They just want to see in the policy that, that you're considering this, that you're not just, that you're not just ignoring it, because they really want you to try to apply this to every single road in town, private or public. It's your policy moving forward. Best practice, this section is 35 points, so another significant chunk. This just says that you'll follow modern guidelines, whose jurisdiction is whose responsibility and again, context sensitivity, which is sort of where that exceptions policy comes into play. You recognize that you're a rural community and that you have to make the solution fit the road, not try to do a one-size-fits-all for the entire town. And then implementation, that's pretty straightforward. Who's responsible for what, what kind of projects you'll be pursuing? And when we talked this over with the tech review committee, they expressed their desire to have a committee in town that would be responsible for implementing this policy so that, and then as part of that, they outlined who would be on that board. Includes people from planning, people from emergency services, there's a variety of experiences on that committee. And then, so, once again, we're at the tier one. Once you approve this policy, then it can be submitted to the state for approval and then after that's approved, you can complete your prioritization plan. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, we'll take questions from the board.
I'll start it out. All right, so, SerpEd's the one that created this one for us?
Yes, it's based on a template that the state released. So, it incorporates everything that they're looking for, but also kind of makes it for Carver.
And by technical review, those were town employees?
Yes.
That what you guys talked to about this?
Yep.
Of the creation of it?
Mm-hmm.
You already answered the why we need this for grant money, but how much does the, is there grant money tied into supplemental costs from the town too for these projects that possibly could go forward, meaning that we have to have a certain chunk of money in order to get some of this?
Do you mean, there's a match?
Yeah, like a match that we have to accommodate.
So, there's no match? The funding would be allocated to you. It is a reimbursement program though, so you have to spend the money, it has to be for the eligible things, which is approved ahead of time and then you get that reimbursement back. Not sure how familiar you are with the Chapter 90 program, but it's very similar to that.
And in the second paragraph of this, I mean, it includes off-road trails, transition, which we really don't have for it, I don't think we'll ever really have it due to the widespreadness of our town, but the off-road trails. Now, the trails that we have are governed by the Conservation Commission, but when I looked at who's the makeup of this committee, it doesn't provide for the Conservation Commission at all.
So, that's something that you can have revised in. However, when we developed this, there was, the agent wasn't attendance, so, and I think that the policy allows for wiggle room in there on who you appoint to the committee. We kept it purposely wide so that people could be appointed at different times for different sort of perspectives. But if that's something that you feel needs to be in there in black and white, that can be amended in there very easily and will not likely change your score.
Bob, if I could just address that, is that you have the planning director on there that oversees conservation, health and everything, so he's kind of the quarterback that brings people in as needed and as you heard, his conservation came into this as needed. So, that's how we do things.
Well, there was one other issue that I have with this is that a lot of the people that are on these are not town residents that's going to be on this committee, it looks like. And I kind of would rather see the committees, i.e. the Conservation Committee, one of those members that are a town resident, to be on this committee so they represent the town as a resident.
Well, I guess what I would say is the town hires professional employees that have the professional background to represent the town and that's why we take great strides in hiring good people that have a track record of always doing, and doing the right thing for the town at all times.
And I take great strides on it, making sure that our town residents should be incorporated in these decision-making processes, all right, have to do with our town, because they represent our town. They are the residents, they live here, all right? And we may disagree upon this, but the bottom line here is this, is that I want to see more town residents to be part of boards and committees within this town. And this one here, the way it's created, all right, it doesn't allow that. And I want to see that happen. I want to see residents that are on this committee.
So, I think that the intent of the sort of bracketed items are to give an example of who would be on the committee. The committee would be developed by the town and therefore the town would decide who's on the committee. I don't think there's anything in this policy that would prevent a Conservation member or anyone else from being on there.
So, what we approve tonight is not setting who's on the committee?
Yes, so that would, that would be a separate meeting and I think that would be a separate town process as well.
Because I wouldn't feel comfortable voting for this unless we have this set in place of who's going to be on this committee, the makeup of it. And, I mean, I thank you for your work, I really do. It's just my preference to see as a selectman in this town, as a resident of this town. as a resident of this town, that residents are on boards and committees. And the way this was created, it doesn't allow, it doesn't appear that that's included. And I want to make sure it is included.
Okay, um, that's something that we can change in the policy. That's an easy change, and then we can come to you later for a vote on the policy. Um, what I would request is that um you provide us that list of who you would like to see on the committee. Um, otherwise we would just be guessing. So, thank you.
All right, so, and again, just to reaffirm, a vote to move forward with this tonight does not establish the committee. You can, you can revise it and bring it back. And when we establish the policy, it'll specifically spell out who's on the committee.
So, if you vote on this tonight, you vote on it as is, as the language. You'd be approving the language. So I'm not sure if that would um, so it doesn't establish the committee. That's something you do later. That's something you pick. But it is in there in black and white, and it doesn't seem to satisfy everyone's um...
So if we, if we made a motion uh to approve subject to adding members from additional residents to the town to the committee, that would be acceptable?
I believe so. Um, I think if you included the specific language, so you could say a vote on the policy with this language, um if you spelled it out, I think that would work. But um, I'm also not the town administrator, so I don't...
So, if I may, I'd like to know, do we appoint this committee? Do, do, do the town select boards appoint this committee?
It doesn't spell that out in the policy, so that would be something that the town would decide.
I think maybe we should.
So if I could just interject here, is that there are certain, there are certain committees and organizations that require the appropriate technical expertise to do that. And, and I'm not here necessarily advocating that this is one of them, but you do have to recognize the planning board has done a lot of review on this, and they voted this as is. So we do have a vote there, and if you change that, I think we have to bring it back to the planning board and have them consider what changes the Board of Selectmen do. Uh, again, I'm going to emphasize is that this is more of a technical review. Uh, we have technical experts working for the town that always act in the town's best interest. If you don't think that's the, the case, then, then obviously you can vote in a different direction. There are many other avenues, whether it's on the Conservation Commission or whatever it may be, where you do have, um, where you do bring in more policy-type things than technical. Um, so again, at the end of the day, it's the Board of Selectmen's decision. Uh, you have something in front of you that's been recommended by the planning board. Uh, this is something that has worked well in the town. Um, and although, Bob, I support the need to get more residents involved, I'm just not sure this is the right vehicle to do that based upon what this program is about. Because it is, again, more technical, and, and you need to have the people that have the experience on it.
If I might interject, I don't think that you're suggesting to not include the technical people, but just to add residents.
I want to see more residents.
It's not, it's not a displacement of the technical people. It's adding some residents to be part of it.
So then I would suggest this, that, um, that two, you know, two residents at large would be added to the committee. And, and then that may satisfy your purpose there, but you need to have the core people there, whether they're town residents or not, they're hired.
Yeah, no one was talking about getting rid of the, the, the technical expertise necessary. They were talking about adding a...
So I think we have five people on here. That would be my recommendation, if that's the direction the board wanted to go and be to, to add two at-large residents um to, to work with the committee.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, that, that was the suggestion I was going to make. And I guess that's, that's the question I have. If we vote to amend this to include, let's say, two citizen participants, we don't have to name those participants tonight. All we have to do is include the, the wording that we will have, two citizen participants. And then we can have people apply and, and, and vote on that at a future, vote on the actual names at a future meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Right. So what I would suggest here on the second page is, in the end of the parentheses, when the second paragraph, after administrator's office, I would just put in there, and two residents at large. And then I think with that, you're adding to what the planning board did. It wouldn't have to go back to the planning board, because you're not deleting anything. You're just adding to that. And if that's the will of the board, then I would just, uh, you know, suggest that friendly amendment to this document, and it satisfies what you need to do. Those can be named at a later point. You're just holding a slot for those folks.
And if I, if I may...
Mr. Chair, yeah, I'd like to hear from the SERP Ed representative on this issue.
Um, I just want to say that we would highly recommend that you keep it general in who, who is named on the policy. Like you, um, wouldn't want to put specifically, I think the two at-large public members is a great way to put it. Um, you wouldn't want to name them in your policy, because then they'd be, then you'd have to change your policy, which is a difficult process.
Okay. Someone want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
Um, I was actually going to also add is that the, the selectmen are the appointing authority for these two at-large positions.
I, I second that.
All right, that's added into the motion.
I still second.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Really appreciate your efforts. Looking forward to your success.
Thank you for having us. Um, we'll make sure that you get the updated policy with that language tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, we move on to a Class II hearing. MTM Auto Sales, Inc., request for online sales license. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Microphone, please.
Want to tell us why you're here?
Good evening. It helps if you guys can hear me. My name is Kayla O'Farrell. I'm the office manager for MTM Auto Sales Incorporated. I'm here with Michael McMan to answer any questions you guys might have about our Class II application. Um, do you guys just want a brief overview of what our intent is with the application?
Yes, please.
So we intend, um, our intent with this Class II auto dealer's license is to conduct only virtual and phone sales. We have a current auto dealer's license in Plymouth to do the same thing. However, um, we're selling the building in Plymouth. We have another business in Carver, so we're just looking to start those operations here. In our history in Plymouth, we've done no car advertising in person. It's strictly, we go to a wholesale auction, purchase a vehicle that we're interested in selling, post it on Facebook or Craigslist, do appointment-only showings, no drop-bys, no stop-ins. They have a set time to come by. There's no advertising on the windows of the cars. They simply appear as if they're another car at the business. Um, no bright flags or signs or stickers or anything like that. Um, in doing most of our business for customers who are requesting specific cars, going to the auction, getting that, and doing a couple that we advertise through Facebook and Craigslist, and do it that way.
All right. Um, we did get some, um, I don't know if we all have a copy of what Robert Francis, the, uh, our building commissioner, sent to us.
He was out today.
Yeah. Uh, he suggested that in his opinion, uh, if we grant this license, uh, through this, that there should be no more than two unregistered vehicles above, uh, uh, the allowed vehicles for sale. Um, I don't know what that means. There should be no more than two unregistered vehicles above...
So if you authorize them?
Doesn't want us collecting a bunch of unregistered vehicles on site, yeah.
Okay, so in other words, you're going to have specific vehicles for sale. And do you have a number in mind as to how many will be for sale?
Honestly, we don't want to keep our hands too busy with it. At any given time, we sell one to two and kind of flip them over that way. Um, holding on to them for a long time poses a lot of challenges. So we like one or two. Keep it simple.
All right. Um, and are, are any repairs taking place on the site?
Repairs to the vehicles that we would buy at auction. Generally minor repairs.
All right, but only to the vehicles that, that you're, you're purchasing and selling?
I, I have a fleet of trucks, and I'm a utility contractor for Mass Save. And I have a fleet mechanic who repairs my equipment. And um, we have a full welding station, and we just service our own equipment. So this is just a, an extension. And primarily, I did it because I have twenty-five employees that live either in the town or Plymouth, all local kids, and they need vehicles. So I saw as a, 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 a vehicle to get them uh, affordable transportation. And we're very mechanical. I'm, I'm hot-rotting, oh, no, let's say hot-running. I'm reconditioning a fifty-one Chevy pickup truck. We're, you know, working folks and enjoy working on cars, so.
All right, other questions?
Yes, thank, I just wanted to know whether you have to go before the planning board for this? If you're going to have things on display?
I was going to say, from what I was told, I thought we only had to go through the select board. I'm not sure about going through the planning board, because we're only doing the online sales. We're not actually putting um stickers on the vehicles. There'll be no decals or knowledge that those are for sale. We simply take pictures of that unmarked vehicle, put them on Facebook, and someone would come by and schedule an appointment. So only them and us selling it would know that the vehicle was for sale. I hope that that helps.
Okay, yeah.
Quite honestly, uh, the license, to record, to, to get the license, you have to have some classification. But we've actually never sold a car online. They're generally just to employees. I bought a car for my daughter. I bought a, bought a truck for my son. Um, you know, friends that, uh, a daughter needs a car for college, because they have the facility and we do the work, it's just, uh, passing it on, you know. And because we have the ability, the ability and the interest, that we do it. So it's...
I would just...
I'm not saying it's a novelty, but it's not our main, main business. We're a utility contractor for Mass Save. I just have the facility and would like the opportunity to buy vehicles at, at a reasonable cost and recondition them and...
Right, no, it's, it sounds like a great idea. I, I would recommend that you ask the planning board.
Of course, yes.
So you can cover all your bases.
Yeah, we, we have a recommendation that, that, on the, from the building commissioner, that a permit through the planning board be obtained. So we would probably condition our vote on uh you going before the planning board and getting any necessary permits in, before our action was in place.
Understandable.
So where would the display, because I'm familiar with that corner there, where would the displays be of the, the vehicles? Well, not displays, but where would they be parked?
They could be parked. Um, we'd prefer to keep them in the back of the lot. The employees use the front of the lot for coming and going parking. So that's, we try to keep the front open. They'd be towards the back of the lot.
Okay, along the Fuller side? Or Fuller Street side?
Other side on Forest.
Just put a parking lot. You may have seen that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Which I had permitted and just implementing it, yeah.
Yeah. Now, did you, um, when you did this work, did you go to planning board already?
Yes, we previously done all that.
You've done all that?
It was all approved and...
And it was all approved?
We have a stamp site plan.
Yes, yeah.
So it does look like you will have to go to planning board for this? Um, the only thing is, there is no set amount, because it says here is how much is allowed. Um, now is that something that we dictate?
They were asking for one or two cars.
Yeah, they were asking for one or two cars?
Yeah.
Two cars, and then the building commissioner recommends no more than two unregistered vehicles above that amount.
And that's completely fine with us, because, you know...
So they're asking for two?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, if, if it's two above, then you're actually talking four.
Well, unregistered, you're only permitting the registered one. That's the licenses for the registered. And what the, the unregistered is an additional stipulation that he wants the board to start to do in the future that you've never done.
Yeah, in the past, we haven't had the limitation on the unregistered.
Right.
This is adding a right, a limitation that wasn't there before.
Right, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Can I just?
Sure.
If, if you plan on doing repairs of the site, do you have a program in place for any hazardous materials, any fluids, things like that, that might be?
What we do is, as a matter of fact, in the, uh, in, uh, yeah, we have a, a company that takes waste oil that we're, that we, because my, uh, I have a fleet of nine trucks that go out every day between, uh, uh, seven and three-thirty and back in. And then they're maintained. Trucks are taken out and, uh, just regularly maintained, so everything runs well. And because of that waste oil created, I have a, a contract with the Safety Clean, which regularly, regularly picks it up. And in the course of, uh, building that parking lot, I was required to put in all the necessary requirements for effluence or, or fluids going into it, and which evolved and implemented.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Was there a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion. We approve the two car and the two unregistered, so...
Subject to planning board approval.
Subject to planning board approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you as well.
Okay, we move on to the select board update. Uh, Mr. Belvin?
Yes, sir. So, um, first thing I want to make sure that everyone knows, there is Hazardous Waste Collection Day, and it'll be at the Carver DPW Building at fifty-one R. Pond Street. And that's Saturday, November sixteenth, from nine till noon. Um, if you go on the website, you can see what's accepted. Uh, we also have, um, you should have gotten the mail...
What time's what?
From nine to twelve noon.
At the old salt shed?
At, no, not the old salt shed. This is on fifty-one Pond Street, near the, the high school, middle school.
Oh, okay, all right.
The active DPW facility.
Gotcha.
Okay. Um, everyone should have gotten in the mail, all right, a posting from the district to let them know when it actually is. Um, so that's the first thing. Uh, the big thing I want to say is, when you come, please bring a container with all your hazardous waste into a separate container that you don't want to keep. Whether you get a cardboard box, put it all in there. That way you can drop it and just keep moving. All right, they don't want to have to wait to empty out a Tupperware container or, um, a milk and crate, and then give it back to you. Just drop it, go and leave. It'll make things a lot more smoother.
Is old gas, uh, something that's allowed, or is that not, uh...
I think that's covered under here. Yeah, spent gasoline.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that was the first thing. Second thing is, um, a couple of things have been going on with the district here. Um, the, uh, the fee.
Well, we've got, we've got that coming up as a, a separate item underneath the, um, selectmen's notes.
No, right, that's what I'm talking about.
Well, no, but, but we're just doing, we're just doing the, the select board updates now.
Okay.
Then we're going to come to that as a separate.
All right, so what's, the update is, is Marion has...
No, no, we're not doing that now. We're just doing us now, and then that's going to be taken.
Our, our comments.
As a separate.
Oh, our comments, sorry.
It's a separate agenda item.
I thought you were, uh...
No, no, no.
No, okay.
This is the, this is the...
All right, this is our turn. Sorry, I apologize. Because it said select board update, and then the first one, okay. So, um, first thing I have is on Wade Street. Um, there was an issue between the redevelopment authority of who actually owns it in the town of Carver, uh, that when I was on the redevelopment authority, we gave it back to the selectmen. Um, but the assessment record card says that it's still owned by the redevelopment authority, all right, and I know...
Didn't you send something out on this, Elaine?
Yeah, I sent it to everybody. Did I send it to, I sent it to all members, right?
Right.
Yeah, but I just want to make it clear, does the town selectmen have authority over that property now, or is it still with the redevelopment authority?
We'll look into that and depart to you.
I, I thought it said that it was... No, I can't remember what you sent. It was very clear, whatever you sent. Um, okay.
All right. All right, the second thing is, is on the Senate Street property, the business there. Um, I drove by today. There was a bucket truck in the back. And the other day, there was actually, the crane was in there parked. Um, so, um, something needs to be done. Uh, then neighbors, they don't need to be dealing with issues like this um in a residential neighborhood. Um, the other thing is, is, um, I got asked by somebody about the last time we went into executive session. I'm not going to disclose anything about that, but they were concerned that it was talking about the landfill. Okay? And they were afraid that there was something wrong with the landfill, just the way it was written. Um, so, um, this was for the last meeting that we had. So just got to be careful that we, when we write something in there, make sure that there's some type of disclaimer about it, uh, of what we're actually going to discuss.
Well, to the extent that we can, but...
Right.
I'm not even sure I remember anything specific about the landfill.
I don't remember the landfill.
No.
Bob, you're talking the district. I know you had an issue with the Carver Marion Wareham Regional District and how they do their executive sessions, which isn't consistent.
No, our last, no, our last executive session.
What was the topic?
I can't discuss it. But it just, it's just how it was advert, it was how it was advertised. All right, it said something about the landfill in North Carver.
Don't remember, haven't... All right, well, we'll be careful on executive session advertisements.
Just make sure it's...
Okay, go ahead.
All right. So the next one was, um, the water issue. I mean, I did get, we get a notice about that. And, um, are we paying for water for the, um, North Carver residents?
Uh, yes, we are.
Okay.
That is all being handled by the Board of Health.
Okay. Uh, the next one is, did the selectmen have any, um, comments or whatnot about the fence bylaw or the TA bylaw that I submitted to the, the boards from last month?
Oh, yeah.
I think we need to...
What, the?
That I submitted?
But, but the one about the, uh, bylaw change or whatever for the TA?
Yeah, and...
I would recommend, Mr. Chairman, we do not talk about that. Would treat, treat that the same as all the other, um, articles for town meeting. And I don't, at the same time, I don't think we should be discussing that ahead of time. I mean, that should fall under the same category as when we have the timeframe for all the...
You can probably hit us up, Bob, individually and just ask if we have any thoughts.
Well, I really can't, because... Well, I really can't, because then we'll have to vote on it.
Well, no. I mean, you can just ask us if we have any questions, any clarification, without coming to any consideration.
The next one is going to be a touchy subject, I think, here, but there was a Facebook post by the town administrator about the playground, and I made a post on it, and then I looked back a few minutes later and my comments were not there. And then another five minutes later, they were put back up. I just want to be careful about, once we post something on social media, you can't take it away. All right?
We don't have control over the website, do we?
Well, you have the control of whoever's posting it.
No, we don't.
It's not the website. You're talking about social media?
Social media, about Facebook, the Facebook post today about the-
We have no control over that.
What, what social media site was it on?
It was Facebook. It was on Carver Helping Carver.
We have no control over Carver Helping Carver.
That would be up to the administrator of that particular day.
You have to talk to the administrator of Carver Helping Carver. This board has no authority over what gets lifted or added to Carver Helping Carver.
The town administrator made a post.
Right.
And you can, and you can control if you want to see something. You don't want to see something on that page, which he linked it to that other page, so.
I don't understand, Bob.
Okay. We'll talk about it afterwards. How about that?
Yeah, I mean, I have no control over what happens on the other-
I mean, I honestly think some of the, some of the stuff that's been coming up lately can be addressed privately without having to be aired, you know, at this point, because the answers could be very simple. But anyway, go on.
Okay. And that's it for today.
Okay. Ms. Hewens?
Thank you. I just wanted folks to know that I was at the new Plymouth Airport Administration Building dedication on Friday. I don't know if anyone's been out there, but it's very nice. The building is dedicated to Walter Morrison, who was a World War II vet, and since a lot of the airport land is in Carver, I felt it was appropriate to go. I also know, this is probably going to be a touchy subject as well, I know all of us have received two formal complaints by senior citizens in this town.
Yeah, those shouldn't be dealt with on this board. Those are separate internal issues that have been addressed.
Well, I think they should be addressed, and I hope-
Then they are being addressed.
Well, I hope that comes to some sort of resolution, because I just think it's really inappropriate, what's going on.
I don't disagree. Mr. Dunham?
Well, to, on Ms. Hewens' concern for that, I was at the COA Board of Directors meeting today.
Well, again, I really don't-
Yes, I'm just saying that it's been resolved.
Thank you.
I wasn't going to go into more detail than that.
All right.
However, talking about Facebook, I'm sorry that I wasn't at the last meeting and whatnot, but I'd like a little bit of clar, put a little clarification out there. I know there's some angst that with our bifurcated contracts, where the newer hires are at 50/50 healthcare as opposed to the seniors that are at 75/25 healthcare. And I just want people to know that that wasn't just something that was popped into the head of the town administrator and just forced onto anybody. First off, the entire Board of Selectmen went ahead and voted to go with that in negotiations, and then the unions each negotiated that. That was not forced on, it was, they were negotiated as part of the total financial package. So just to say that, you know, you may not like the 50/50, but it was a position of the board to save the town money, because health costs were going so far out of control, and it was something that was negotiated with the unions. We, the board, did not force it on the unions or on the employees. It's just the way it is. Also, there was some Facebook, you know, free speech is a wonderful thing, but complaining about or concern about pay scales, and again, pay scales with our union employees are negotiated with the unions. Recently, we had, we had SEIU, and we realized that we had three grades that were below what they should be compared to other towns. So the board approved us going ahead, and we highlighted those two, those three areas more. So they got a little bit more of a pay bump than the top and bottom, to bring them all in line with what area, surrounding communities have. So, you know, it's kind of one-sided. You know, Facebook is a wonderful thing, good way to communicate, good way to pass out, you know, pass around. I've seen some great recipes on there, things like that. But when it comes to, you know, one-sided bits about, you know, well, it's not fair that 50/50, well, then I would look forward to being briefed on what the insurance split is for every community in the state of Massachusetts to see if we are out of the norm of having 50/50 for any of our employees.
That's something we can sort of get into with the budget season if we want to.
Right, and I would like to see that, you know, as a budget, and also our steps and whatnot. I'd like to see that come out in the budget, and if it needs to be increased, how we'll pay for it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Townsend?
Mr. Chair, could I just ask one question on something Alan said? My understanding was this board voted the 50/50 would, 50/50 healthcare split cost would go into effect in 2025.
That's for the retirees. We're talking about what's been negotiated with the unions today.
Yeah, the board has voted unanimously to about five years ago and every year since then to migrate all unions to 50/50, and that was a unanimous vote of the board, and Sarah, you were, you were part of that.
Yeah, but I couldn't vote five years ago, because I was still an employee, so I didn't-
Four years ago.
Five years ago.
Mr. Townsend?
Thank you. Before I get to my, before I get to my selectmen's update, I think at some point, because I'm hearing a lot of different things on what is or is not on social media, and I think at some point, we as a board may need to discuss or rediscuss our social media policy as a board. And I think we also may need some guidance from town council as to what violates, or what constitutes a violation of the open meeting law on social media. Because oftentimes, I see things on social media that other members of the select board have, have said or have commented on, but I'm reluctant to comment on it, because I feel it might be a violation of, of the open meeting law. So I think, I think that's just a discussion we need to have, and I think before we have that discussion, we need some guidance from town council as to what is or is not a violation of the open meeting law regarding social media. So if at some point we could put that on the agenda, I think that would be a good thing.
Yeah, I think as we get into the new year and we're approaching the, as we get into the budget, that we oftentimes, when council is in here, we will, that's a good opportunity to ask those questions.
I think so. And as far as my selectmen's notes, just to let everybody know, my next office hours will be November 12th at 6 o'clock in the room next door as always. So I look forward to seeing you and any concerns you may have. And just to let everybody know, the Carver Scouts are hosting a Veterans Day breakfast on Saturday, November 9th at 8:30 at Our Lady of Church, Our Lady of Lord's Church, right next door. So that's a great opportunity. And as we have Veterans Day coming up, I just want to wish all our veterans a wonderful Veterans Day, and thank you all for your service. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, one thing I forgot, since I will unfortunately not be at the next meeting, and I will be too far away to do, by promote participation, I just want to wish everybody in the town a very happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we will move on now, Mr. Belvin, to the Carver Marion Wareham Regional Refuge District update, which includes a possible vote on fees.
All right. Sorry, talked about hazardous waste state. Sorry. So the district, we've gone through a couple of different things. Marion has come back and has finally given the notice that they're going to pull out from the district, which leaves Carver and Wareham to be part of the district. But there's been no vote yet as if we're going to be in the district or not. At some point, it's going to have to be said. What we have done is we've created two different committees, one on finances, which I serve on, and a new one that was created to have an outlet to disband the district, but also to disband just one member of it. So this committee-
The one member would be Marion?
Marion will be leaving, all right, but we don't have a process on them to leave.
To dissolve them.
So-
To dissolve them.
To dissolve, to dissolve the whole thing, but even just to get rid of one, we don't have a process for it, so we have to create that process.
So there's no bylaws in place or whatever to-
No, it wasn't, it wasn't a very good creation document, all right? So needless to say is, we have a separate committee that's going to meet, and they're going to create this document that'll be all encompassing of if we stay in the district, what the district's going to look like. If we don't stay in the district, how it gets dissolved, and how things get dispersed, if it's any money or sales of real estate. They'll have to go through that whole process of dissolution of the district. But we don't know if it's going to happen or not. So Carver and Wareham will be the two people left over.
The end of 2020 is the end of the current agreement with Covanta.
Covanta, yes.
Right.
All right. And then it's up to the district to pay for the running of the two different facilities.
And were they, if, if we decided to move forward, are they giving us, are those, we own those facilities or the-
The district owns it. The district owns the properties, both of them, right now. If, for some reason, that the district says that we don't want the Marion one there open at all, that reverts back to Marion. Okay, because we have occupancy rights of it, but once we stop doing any services down there, providing it, then it goes back to Marion.
Yeah, that was clear.
So we, there's no money associated with that at all, except for the equipment that's there. All right, all the equipment reverts up to Route 28.
So we don't so much own the land as own the rights to operate there if the, if there's a district to operate it?
Correct.
So Rochester being, Rochester is part of the-
Rochester is not part of the district, but they have the rights to use the transfer station.
District has the rights to use the transfer station, so even if Marion left, that would not adversely affect the ability of the district to continue on.
But we can negotiate with Rochester at that point to be part of the district if we want to. Or creations of these documents through this committee could also allow the district to sell stickers individually to other places, other towns or whatnot. It would relieve some of the pressure possibly from different areas. But we don't know, because we don't know where we're at. And it's very difficult to find out, because now that they're leaving, I did a rough, a rough look at of how much we would end up having to pay and the different options, and it's really difficult to come out and say, okay, it's going to be this amount or it's going to be this amount. Because there are some factors of how much waste is going to be, what's, how much in tonnage are we going to end up sending over?
Well, yeah, we had this conversation before, that if you don't know how much you need to charge, you don't, if, you know, if you come up with a figure of 125, you could have everybody. But if you come up with a figure of 250 or 275, then a bunch of people might say, to heck with them, just going to go to a private hauler.
Well, the good thing about the district is that we are taking some steps of getting some negotiated prices. When we stay open in 2021, that we actually have negotiated prices of how much per ton it's going to cost. Now, the other trash haulers in town are going to lose that benefit. They're going to have to pay whatever the going rate is, which will be increased too. But we have to have, my opinion is, we have to have an option, all right? And that option is, is to keep it open, and my opinion is to keep it open for a couple of years to see how we're at. And if it's not feasible, then we close it at that point. But we have ways of decreasing the cost, whether it be a bag fee, so you have a small price for a sticker and then a bag fee, all right? On top of that, so whatever bag you use, that's what you throw away. So that would decrease the cost for the residents.
I mean, as we've discussed before, I mean, I don't have an objection to keeping the facility open as long as the town residents aren't going to have to subsidize it. It needs to pay for itself, because there were, the majority of the town uses someone other than the district. I, you know, I've got waste management. They've got nothing to do with Covanta and they go elsewhere. So my, the cost of my trash disposal isn't going to change as a result of what happens to the district. And the majority of the residents in town don't, you know, take their own trash down, per se, so that, you know, I guess all I'm saying is, I need to see some black and white numbers to be able to pass a judgment as to whether I think it's a good idea to keep it open, rather than suddenly find out, as we did with the North Carver Water District, that we're going to be on the hook for $100,000 a year if we choose to keep it open.
I'm glad you said that, because what I did is, I took 1,800, this is what I did. I took 1,800 people, stickers sold and found, okay? And I took 600 of those are veterans and, and I just picked a number. This is not anything that I just picked number 600.
You're saying we sold 1,800 stickers?
1,800 stickers, that's what we sold.
At $50 apiece.
Well, we have reduced rates for seniors and veterans. So I took 600 out of that figure, all right, of that amount. All right? So in order to keep, if we have to pay 30% of whatever the, the 1.4 million dollars to run the district, all right, you do that-
If that's the right figure.
If that's the right figure, okay, you come out to $233, all right, if we did it evenly across the board, okay? But if you have it just on, if you, if you offer senior rates at a lower rate, say $100 for a senior, okay, you now bump up that rate on the people for stickers that are subsidizing the seniors and the veterans that are using the service, all right, that brings it up to 300 and something dollars. All right? Because the people that are using it are subsidizing-
And when you hit the 300 range, now you're charging more than it costs to have a private hauler.
Well, we don't know what those costs are going to be in 2021.
Well, I mean, I know I'm paying like 280 a year now for my-
Right. So, but if the town, instead of the residents that are using the service subsidizes the seniors and veterans, if the town picks up 80,000, it drops it down to the 233. Now, these are just numbers that I picked out. I did 65% for Wareham of that cost.
Can I just, just for clarification, that 80,000, so that's the town subsidizing?
The town would have to subsidize 80, $80,000.
I just want, from a budget standpoint, I just want to know that's-
Right. And like I said, these are not set in stone numbers. These are ones that I just took and said, okay, fine, here we go. And then-
That would bring the return down to 233.
The residents would be down to 233, but that's an $80,000 chunk the town would have to subsidize to keep it running, all right? But I also put in 5% for Rochester and other things that the district, if they sold stickers, I put that in there too. So I don't, the fee structure that we have, something's got to be done with it. So the board, the district cannot assess fees to the town. We can't tell, I mean, it's not fees. We can't assess a sticker fee for each town.
Yeah, I think originally that was the thought, is-
That was our thought. We found out we couldn't do that, so now it's up to us board to decide what the sticker fee is going to be. And the district has decided not to assess any amount to the towns, all right? So the town doesn't have to-
So it has to be paid for entirely by user fees.
No, this is, what I'm saying now is that we have to decide how much the sticker fees are going to be for this year coming.
The town of Carver?
The town of Carver, okay? Wareham will have to decide theirs, and Marion will have to decide theirs, okay? But I want to make it clear that the district is not assessing any fee to the town for using the services.
So any, so the monies would not go to the district to help, well, actually, for 2020, it doesn't matter. It's being covered by Covanta, right?
Yes, but what I'm talking about is now. I'm not talking, I'm talking about-
No, but I'm saying, if we, if we, why would we raise the price of the fees now if there's no charge to the town now?
Well, that's what I'm saying, is that the district is leaving it up to the towns to decide what the fees are. That's why we, I put it on for here, is that we have to discuss what the fee's going to be for this, this year coming.
For 2020.
Yeah, all right.
Even though technically the, those fees would stay within the town of Carver.
They've always stayed with, those sticker prices, those stickers that we sell have always stayed with the town.
Right.
Okay, that the assessment that the, the district has submitted in the past, the town had to pay that assessment, okay? They had no choice. But there is no assessment coming up this year.
Because the district has the money?
District, we have money in an account to run everything. The $125 that we were trying to pay for the operating budget, so we didn't have to take the money from the savings of what we have, so we can put that back into the infrastructure.
But you found out you couldn't do that.
Found out we couldn't do that, so now we have to, it's up for the board to decide what the sticker-
I guess I'm just wondering, why would we raise it to 125?
I'm not saying, that's what I'm saying, is, I'm not.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, we have to decide.
So you're saying that the district has enough money to run everything for 2020?
Yes.
Then why are we going to charge anything for stickers? Why do we not just do zero?
Well, we've never done, even, even under the old circumstances, we always charged something to, you know, back when it was $10 for two years and then 20.
Okay, so I have another, because this was brought up at our meeting too, is that our sticker, if we, we separate the sticker, there's two different costs. We have a beach sticker, which is $10, and basically $40 for the transfer station. There's a $40 fee right there. The district paid for the stickers, okay, and, but the town's going to have to do the work to take copies of the registration- And, but the town's going to have to do the work to take copies of the registration and the license, what they do down there, okay? They're going to have to input information into our computer systems for it, so it's going to take time.
Which they, I mean, but that's nothing new. I mean, we've been doing that.
Right. So I mean, you have to charge the.
So you have to charge something, is what you're saying?
We have to charge something, okay? And there's the option of just keeping it as this, what we have now for next year and the following year, find out where we're at next year and decide next year what the fee will be, but have this on a schedule. And then in 2021, then we'll have to decide.
Well, he decided before 2021.
We keep it running, while we keep it running, we're going to have to decide.
The option is that you try, you try to come up with numbers that we feel all comfortable enough that we're, we're not going to worry, or at least minimize the worry that the town ends up subsidizing the cost to maintaining it, or at least we know what we're voting on, versus just the district. The district could decide to dissolve on its own, right?
We can vote to dissolve and, but we'd still have, we can dissolve, but we have to still be a district, because we have other.
No, I understand that, but that would make a moot point.
We could go to a skeleton, because it would be just two towns.
Right.
It would be Wareham and Carver, all right? Two towns that will have to deal with the district issues that come in play about our liabilities that we have.
But if the union dissolved, then that puts an end to the whole discussion about ongoing.
Fees, it does, but then it puts it on the backs of the residents to force to go into a trash hauling system that may be very expensive for people on a budget. And if the district can run it at a cheaper rate, than what is offered out there, all right, going in the future, then my feeling is, we should stay that course and see.
But all that information is still to come. We don't have.
It's still to come, but right now on the table, right now, I just want to let you guys know where we're at, all right? That we have a finance committee in place to look at all our finances, to find out what's going on. We also have a new committee that will create documents to exit. If we need to exit, just one, two, or dissolve the whole thing, they'll look at all these, make sure that legally, whatever is done, we do legally, it's open and upfront to everyone that this is what's going on. And hopefully, everything runs smooth and we don't have any issues, but like I said, it's just, it's very difficult.
When do we normally approve sticker prices and stuff? Is that per?
Now, I mean, we're going to start selling them at the end of the month. So I mean, I guess, Bob, what are you recommending for sticker price?
Keep it the same for now?
You know what? I, I, keep it the same, I mean, it's going to be a huge jump in 2020 if we stay, if the district stays open.
In 2021.
In 2021, and we continue to offer, the district continues to offer the services to the residents within the district and maybe other dis, other towns to get involved or whatever that we can do, that we keep it open, but it's going to be, you're going to go from, if we keep it $50, all right, the jump to 200 to 250 is a possibility and we don't know.
But it would, I mean, but if it went to 125, that's just extra money coming in for us.
Exactly. It comes into extra money coming in for the towns.
I mean, I would, personally, I wouldn't want to charge the, until it's time.
Right.
I wouldn't want to charge the residents anything extra.
So with the fees, we have to look at two different things, yeah, too. Is number one, all right, we have a regular sticker fee, then we have a fee for veterans and seniors that are reduced weight. Do we want the reduced rate for veterans and seniors and how much that reduced rate's going to be? All right, we can keep it the same now, which is $25, and a regular one is $50. All right? So that's.
It sounds like we might as well just keep.
So, well, let me just jump in there, Mr. Chairman, because I think what has changed drastically is a couple of things. And I did talk to the executive director of the district before he went on vacation. One, just for clarification, is Marion took a vote to begin the process, not necessarily to vacate the entire district. What happens is, any one of the towns has to take two town meeting votes. The first town meeting, which is Marion took, is to begin negotiations for a workout solution. Doesn't mean they're leaving, just means that they.
Is this something that's in the founding documents that?
Yes. It's in the founding documents. It authorizes the town of Marion.
So we have to do the same thing if we, if we.
Correct. It's non-binding. It just says, the selectman in, or the town administrator, Marion, has the ability to negotiate with the district to see what it would cost or what the impacts would be to leave. After they negotiate whatever that settlement is, then they have to bring it back to the town for the final vote. So it's a two-step process. The first step is non-binding, the second step finalizes that. What has changed, and, you know, when I got involved with the other town administrators taking over the district, is we had a negative bank balance into the account. Through the changes that we've done over the last three years, when the new executive director came on board, we had built up the coffers to around $600,000, little over $500,000 when it was negative number before. So we built up a nest egg in there through making sure that all the money was spent appropriately and documenting where that goes. So we had built up a nest egg. And as part of that, there were assessments given to the town at that point, and that's why we were charging fees to pay for those assessments. What the district did is they voted, and this is what's fundamentally different, is they voted that in 2020, there will be no, there will be no fees going to the district, I mean, to the towns. So the district has $600,000 thereabouts in the account today. Over the next year, they're going to have all of their expenses and then some paid by Covanta. If they don't do any major capital expenses, they could have $800,000 plus or minus by the end of 2020, calendar year 2020, when the district closes, which could be used to pay for all the unfunded liabilities, the OPED issues. And there's already a trust fund set up to close the landfill, so that's already taken care of. And, you know, how that administratively would have to, would have to be looked at by this, looking at the whole, you know, dissolving of the whole entity. So there's no need for the district to charge the towns. Again, in the past, we were always threatened with an assessment. We know there's not going to be an assessment. So as I said at the district meeting, is I think at this point, because we don't know what the other towns are going to charge, and if Marion continues to charge $10 and then Wareham charges 40 and we charge 50, well, then we know ahead of time the towns are just going to pocket this money. And right now, what I would advocate for.
Excuse me, let me ask, when we were collecting the $50 before, was that based on what it was going to cost for us to reimburse?
We knew there was going to be an assessment, because they could do an assessment, because the board never took a vote not to do an assessment.
But I'm saying, so that money, the $50 money was not kept by the town of Carver, it was used to pay an assessment?
What?
Or anticipated to be used?
Anticipated to be used to pay the assessment. It paid the assessment, whatever the residual was, was kept by the town. But again, at that point, we knew there was going to be an assessment. This year, we know there's not going to be an assessment. So I would actually argue that what the town should do is roll it back to $10 for everybody and then $5 for, you know, the veterans, however you want to do that. So it's the same as the beach sticker, just for the processing.
Does that cover the administrative costs that?
It covers the administrative costs, because we know going into 2020, there's no cost to the town of Carver.
No, I understand that. I'm talking about the, the paying for staff's effort to do everything.
Because staff has, has all the documentation for that.
So what we discussed at our meeting was that the $50 fee that we charge here, that it was my understanding, the other towns are going to charge the same fee. That was my understanding when we left that meeting, was that this was the fee structure that we have, all right, that the other selectmen will be doing the same type of a fee structure, similar to what Carver does, because Wareham does $40, but they also do a separate beach sticker too. So they come in line with us with that $40 for the transfer station.
Isn't that just money pocketed by the town, though?
Yeah, it is.
So it'd be, in other words, it'd say, another, where there's not going to be an assessment, basically, it's a hidden tax for the taxpayer, as opposed to rolling back the sticker fees, giving some money, you know, giving our residents a chance to save a little bit of money for a year, realizing that in 2021, it's probably going to go way the other way. But I think we have the opportunity to save the residents a little bit of money for the 2020. And I like the idea of rolling back to 20 or dollars or so, or maybe 10 or nothing.
Does it create an issue with the other towns if we?
I don't know.
We have no idea what Marion's going to do, their $10. They said last year they were going to move it to 50, they never did. I don't see any, I'd be surprised if they actually moved it, even though one person said they didn't, and other selectmen said they're not going to. So again, we have no guarantee what the other towns are going to do, but that's their business. Our business is, we know today, from a policy standpoint, there's no expenses, except for processing. And from a processing standpoint, the $10 more than covers that for, for town hall.
Is a $10 a beach sticker and trash?
Uh, yes.
Wouldn't be an extra $5 for beach?
No.
Just a straight 10 is enough? I mean, I know it used to be that inexpensive.
Yeah. It used to be that, and then we had to move it up.
Wasn't it a two-year sticker?
Years ago, it was a two-year sticker, then it went to a one-year sticker, and then it went up again. Now, again, I do want to, you know, support Bob in this statement, is that come 2021, there may be a district, there may not be a district. You know, Bob's using numbers, was it 266 you said?
233.
233.
If, if we subsidize.
If we subsidize the seniors and give them half price, so it's $300. We've heard when Jeff came here to the meeting, that you're somewhere around $250 to $300 minimum. And that's assuming you're getting some volume of people that's there. So whether the district goes forward or not, there's going to be some additional cost for people that are currently using the transfer facility. Whether a district exists or whether they have to get private service, in 2021, they're going to have to do something. And there's going to be a cost. But right now, there's no cost in 2020.
I mean, if, if we were to go back, take it back down to $10, I would really urge that when people get their sticker, they get a, a letter stating, you know, what may happen in 2021, so that they are not under any illusions that, you know, we're back to $10, you know, for the, for the rest of the decade or something.
I think that's a great idea, and can I just suggest this? That part of it is that when they submit their sticker, we can actually have them put all their documentation in there and sign it, that we know that they've read that, because again, everyone's going to say, well, I never knew about this.
Well, I don't know. But I think the letter is, I think the letter is a great idea, and I, I see no reason. I mean, you're signing for the sticker anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, you know, as long, you, I mean, you can have the verbiage on whatever they're signing, so, but to acknowledge.
So after, I have another thing here, is that at my subcommittee meeting for finance, it was discussed that we want to make sure that all the documentation is consistent with each town. And one of the members had suggested Carver. Our language in our policy for transfer station policy is really good, and that the district should go ahead and, and look at that too. So I was given the great opportunity to retype our policy for the towns into one for the Carver, Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District, transfer station policy. It's in draft form now. I basically took everything from the towns' Carver's policy here and changed the names around it. Added a few things that I saw that needed to be added, nothing major. But the one big thing I did do is make sure that people knew the sticker fees each district town was responsible for their own assess.
Now, this, this is going to go to the district?
The district will vote on this to see, make any changes or whatnot, and then it will be given to the towns, so the towns will know what the policies are, okay?
But it doesn't require a vote by the town?
Not by the town. I mean, if you want to look at it for the next meeting, I'll give it to you guys, but it's the district, the district's policy.
Okay.
It's because it's the district.
If you could forward a copy of it.
Right. But, like I said, it's just the fact that the district will vote on this at our next meeting.
Okay.
All right? And then once it's, it's voted on, it'll go to each town, and the town can.
I mean, if, if, again, if you forward it to us and we pick up, we can pass some comments on to you, you know? But again, if it's basically, basically copying what we.
99% of it is everything that Carver has, because that's was the comment, is Carver has a really good policy and we should.
There's nothing in there making you president of the district and awarding a $300,000 salary?
No, no.
Okay.
No, but that, that was it. So the big thing for tonight is, is what the fee structure's going to be, all right, for the town and.
I mean, I, I personally like the idea of rolling it back, given the, given that we don't know what the future holds, maybe giving them one last break before what they might face, or the, you know, the price is going to go up anyway, but if we can give them one more year, the reliving 1994, then pricing, then let's, let's go ahead and do that.
Anytime we have an opportunity to save the residents money, we should take it.
But I do really think it's important that everyone that gets a sticker gets a notice that this applies to 2020 only, and there's a, there's a, there's a real chance there could be a significant increase, I mean, maybe mention it could be anything from $100 to $300 fee. I mean, it's almost, I almost hesitate to, but it's almost like need, we need to put something in their head.
We do.
That they, you know, it could be $100 to $300, I guess.
I think we just used what the director gave us, was 250 to 300 is a preliminary estimate and leave it at that.
And this is the perfect opportunity to do it, because we are directly reaching the people that use the, use the transfer station. This is the perfect opportunity to get that information.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we set the 2020 sticker rates at $10.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
With the addition of the, adding that letter.
Yes.
What about veterans?
Yeah, do we want to say 10?
Just mimic, oh, veterans would be $5?
Five dollars. I meant that to be $5 for seniors and veterans.
I second it.
And seniors are 65 or older?
Mm-hmm.
Or what is that typically age bracket?
We use 65.
Is 65, okay.
All I know is I is one.
So if I wait till next May to get my sticker, then I can get the $5 rate instead of the $10 rate.
So I have no problem with this at all, I really don't. I like the idea of a letter, I really do, given to everyone that gets it, that they really understand that if the, if the district survives in 2021, there will be a large jump from down here up to here.
Right. And again, you know, we use the executives.
And one of, one of the other things is, is that the district may get more tonnage coming into the district because of the low fee. And that could be an issue with the district of swaying some of the numbers that we have going forward.
I would say that's definitely, you're certainly going to see an uptick in, in stickers once we lower the price, that's.
Right. And, and using the services, so it will.
So what you're saying is, it's going to be tough to try to make, even tougher to try to anticipate what we're going to see in 2021, because the numbers might be inflated this year.
Paul, would you so emphasize that this is only residential rate? This is not commercial, commercial is not accepted by the district?
Well, see, and, well, that's a problem. That's a problem at Route 28.
No, no, no. Forget that for a second. The sticker that we're selling is only for residential. The enforcement's a separate issue, but this, for contractors buying the $10 sticker does not entitle them for commercial dumping.
Right. Right, and that's included in the policy that we, that Carver currently has in place?
The only time we get a commercial plate is if it's their only vehicle in their household, and they can prove that to us.
It should even be in the letter that this is strictly, I mean, it should be spelled out so they have no chance of suggesting they were confused.
So that's what people are buying. Now, Covanta has an enforcement issue, that's their issue. They're paying the bill, we're not paying the bill for that. We are overseeing that in the Marion facility, so we're not allowing commercial activities in there. But again, this sticker is only for residential.
Right, and, and like I said, it, it's gonna be difficult if it, we get an uptake of, um, of tonnage, it's gonna sway our numbers drastically at the district. Just to bear in mind that that's the issue, but I have to say, at the last, um, couple of times when I went down there, uh, we had our security personnel, she did a really good job turning people away. But we still have that issue of people coming with no stickers, um, expired stickers, commercial guys would just coming in there, and then, um, that gives us great numbers when they do that, um, but we still have a problem with commercial.
In their interest to really police the heck on that, to save.
No, it's not, it's not in their, Covanta's all about burning trash, they're about tonnage, they don't care.
Yeah.
Their money.
Chairman, can we kinda stay on the, the motion at hand, please?
Anyway, so, but I would say, let's make sure the letter also includes a statement about the fact that this is intended for Carver residents, uh, seniors and, and veterans, and not for, strictly not for.
Household residential waste, right, that's it.
Uh, and if it's possible, uh, to maybe send the draft out to the board before it's done?
Motion to approve the price of the transfer station stickers as ten dollars for all residents, non-commercial business vehicles, that there will be significant increase of two hundred fifty to three hundred dollars by tw- for 2021. By Dunham, second, Majosso, and, okay.
Yeah, we.
You had to put in there, uh, five dollars.
For seniors.
Ten dollars for residents, five dollars for military, uh, veterans and seniors.
Yeah.
But that's not.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Gonna put that with the motion.
All right, that was made, can we get another second?
Second.
And also add the part about it being only for residents, not commercial.
It's in there, I agree.
All right, any further discussion? Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. All right, thanks for that update, Bob.
Thank you.
Uh, town hall meeting update, I, uh, played, uh, um,
Phone tag.
Phone tag, thank you, with, uh, the attorney this week, so I haven't got an update, I will have that for you hopefully at the next meeting. Uh, and then, um, the idea, uh, we want to, uh, establish that we wanna open the town meeting warrant articles for thirty days and set town meeting for April fourteenth, twenty twenty. Do we need a motion for that effect?
Yes, we do.
Mr. Mayor, um, Chairman, I move that we, uh, take town meeting warrants from this, uh, November, say, fifth, through December fifth, and then set a, uh, date for town meeting of April fourteenth, twenty twenty.
Is there a second?
Sorry, second, but Mr. Chair, shouldn't we start on November sixth, because today's al- almost over?
Okay. Six, I meant that to be November sixth.
Okay.
To December sixth.
To December sixth.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Um, I'd like to actually extend that a little longer than just like to December fifteenth, um, to give people more time. Got to figure, through the process of going through plan, if it's zoning, it's going to planning board, your meetings, put it posted and everything, that.
I don't, I don't think they have to have gone through all of that, this is just to get them into us. They don't have to have completed the process with planning board.
No, I understand that, but.
So we went to the department head meeting, we discussed this today, uh, for many of the boards and committees, you know, in essence, I need a placeholder, a sentence describing what it's gonna be within those thirty days, we need to get this done, Bob, so we can move forward with the budget process. And that's why consistently we do it for the thirty days, I think in the past, we might have done it for twenty-eight days, but, um, um, you know, it's important to move forward for this, and, uh, so that we can, again, finalize the budget and get the budget to you guys in December to look at. But we need to know what's coming in for articles.
So how about we do a two different tiered timeframe, one for money articles to be done by the fifth, and then for, um, zoning articles, December fifteenth or January first, a, a separate timeframe.
Uh, again, I would, from a staffing standpoint, putting this together, from the legal review, putting it all together, we'd like to keep it consistent as we do year over year, we give people thirty days to come in, and it allows the staff to move forward with what they're doing.
I mean, I, I guess my concern, Bob, is that I, I have been very vocal the last couple of years, that we are supposed to be have everything done thirty days ahead of town meeting, which means by March fourteenth, everything done, including articles, and we have failed, that, we've had budgets done, and budgets ready published, but we've been fiddling around with town meeting articles almost to a week before.
Exactly, to a week before.
So that, and I, 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 yeah, I mean, so I've been really pushing that we have to have a hard date. Perhaps next year, we can start sooner, you know, maybe start, uh, you know, mid-October and, and, and have it, but at this point, I think we're up against a wall based on the timeline that's been established.
Yeah, I would have liked to start this a little earlier, but, um, that's why I just need to get all this done.
But I mean, it's, I mean, the board, we, we, we could open it up in June, if we wanted to, and say, you submit them anywhere from June to December.
And I would say next year, that's probably a good idea, I, I would like to give people more time, but I think, I think that's the way we should go, I think we should open up earlier and not make the date later, I think.
Yeah, just if we're gonna, I mean, 'cause ag- again, I have really been a stickler, and we have failed to do it, uh, and, and I've actually brought it up in the the TA's admini- evaluation, that we haven't been making that deadline, so that I, I feel strongly that we have to give the opportunity to get those in, get them vetted, um, give everyone a chance to review them, but it, it seems like council gets caught up with them for quite a bit.
Well, it takes a while, it's not an easy task, I mean, it's a, it's a complicated thing, that's why, you know, as Elaine just reminded me, on the website, we have for citizen petitions, 'cause this is for citizen petitions also, is we have the instructions to how to do that. And then many times, those have to be rewritten, or whatever it may be, so, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into putting this together.
Any further discussion? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it. We move to town administrator update.
At seven forty-five.
Oh, boy, all right, um. So let me start off with, um, um, the police station, um, the police station, we have, um, we have put the project out to bid, um, we were able to resurvey the property that's going out to the final bid for the contractors, we've received the subcontract, uh, bids back. Um, just to clarify, there's misinformation out there on Facebook, uh, that the, the, the project is over budget, there is no budget for the police station. Uh, we've always said we're moving forward with the buil- building elements, there's gonna have to be additional furniture and fit out, we're gonna be going to town meeting as additional, uh, needs come into play, we've tried to streamline this to the extent that we can. That being said, when we put it out to bid, we had a contractor's estimate is to what it is, and so far, the sub-bids as a whole have come in below the contractor's estimate, not a lot, but a little bit, and that's usually a good sign that the main contractor should follow through with that as well. But again, there's no final budget for what the police station's gonna be, town meeting has provided, uh, money in, in several different tranches, uh, to this project. Uh, so that is moving forward. Uh, we are tentatively looking at potentially a groundbreaking in the first week of December, um, and more information will be coming from that, uh, subject to us getting a, uh, a qualified contractor to bid on the project, uh, which we, we anticipate we will be doing. Uh, just on that note, uh, we do anticipate, um, that there will be, um, uh, close to a million, I wanna say it's ninety-three thousand dollars that we were able to save from the elementary school project. That is going to, um, close out, um, in the very beginning of next year. We're gonna have DOR come in, and they're gonna do a second recertification of free cash, so we can transfer that money into the police station, which has always been part of the plan. Uh, so that is, uh, moving along very positively. Any questions on the police station?
So what is the, what is the estimate cost right now, as we're seeing for it, 'cause it was, the numbers have been floating out there, about seven million, eight million, what is the roundabout cost of the police station gonna be?
For what, the police station, the entire project, or what? 'Cause, again, what you have is, you've got a police station, you've got a fit out of the police station with furniture and equipment, you've got road improvements. Um, now, we're gonna do a cistern improvement, as we talked about when the chief was here, to solve some fire suppression things. So there's a bunch of components that we're still working through.
So what is the entire, 'cause my feeling is, is that the police station is all encompassing, everything you just said. So the, the budget of how much this is all going to cost.
Mm-hmm.
What is that roundabout fee, 'cause we don't have a estimated fee, that's what I'm just looking for.
Sure, I'll get that, I'll get that to you at the next meeting.
Okay.
Any other questions? Uh, next item is the playground, um, again, we've, uh, wanna clarify some misinformation that's out there. Um, you know, when, when we were able to start, um, installing the equipment, uh, this week, and, uh, we had the big lookout rock come in today. And, uh, we're hoping that a, the vast majority of the equipment can be inst- completed in the next week or two. Um, now, again, to cl- clarify some misinformation that's out there, the project budget for this project was seven hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, when we brought that to CPC, CPC said, we're only gonna give you six hundred thousand dollars, and they said, Michael, you've been good at other projects, find a way of saving a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and, or get donations. Um, so the project budget is seven hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, it is not six hundred thousand, that's just the cash that we have available to that. The CPC, uh, when they originally did their vote, they had four different votes, 'cause they weren't sure town meeting was gonna, uh, approve all four elements. Town meeting did approve all four elements, and as a result of that, the CPC then voted at the request of the recreation committee to combine those four elements into the one project, just like we do with other projects, that I'm given a total budget to work for, and I always bring those projects in under budget. Uh, so they did take that vote. Um, there has been, um, and this has somewhat been disappointing, um, and, and I do think the board needs to take a harder look at this. Um, you know, discussions was talked about earlier today, is the will of the board, and when the board votes, something that we need to follow that through. Is misinformation that's been out there that's been somewhat disingenuous to staff. And what I mean by that is, uh, comments that are coming out there that the staff, uh, doesn't know what they're doing by making the statement that we should have built the playground first before we did the parking lot. And, and that's somewhat silly. And I say that because any development project, which, you know, Dave Sigintoff's done, John Woods has done, and I've done many of them myself, you first start with the underground pieces. You have to do the stormwater piece, where's the water gonna go for the drainage? And if we're gonna spend over a hundred thousand dollars for rubberized surface, guess what happens? We live in New England, it freezes. If you don't have good drainage, then that'll have frost heaves, and the rubber will last one year. And that's why this project has appropriate drainage, in order to do the drainage, the drainage needs to connect and flow someplace. That's why we started the project with doing the drainage components. Once the drainage was all installed, then we finished the parking lots, we finished the parking lots now. And, and also part of the drainage ties into the ball fields, where we had two ball fields built on top of each other, so we had to dig that out and put additional drainage that's in there. Um, and, and now we're in the final position where we're able to go in and install the playground area. So I, I do think that the board should, you know, reconsider, um, looking at its code of conduct, if we're not going to enforce it or follow it, then why do we have it? Um, because we have staff that follows it and, um, takes great pride in the work they're doing. And, um, you know, as a topic of discussion today at our, and, at our monthly department head meeting, um, when, when silly comments are coming out, uh, that again, is disingenuous to staff trying to do a hard job for the town. Uh, so that's where that project is, again, I have every intention of trying to get that as close to six hundred thousand dollars as I can. Um, but one of the things that we are looking to do is to make it safer and with the resilient surface, and if we need to go over budget on that, I'm gonna be talking to the capital outlay committee, which has funds available for that. And if they determine to fund that additional piece, then that's their decision with the finance committee. Um, but, um, again, we are trying to build a class A facility, uh, for our children, and, um, I just wish it could have gotten started sooner. But it will be a great facility when complete. Uh, and I just ask that, you know, tied into our code of conduct, that we do respect staff and let them do their jobs. 'Cause that's why they're hired.
Could I just ask you, there, there have been a lot of questions out there about the resilient surfacing and the, and the temperature necessary to install that, so just for the benefit of the public watching, could you just revisit that, the temperatures necessary and?
Yes. Unfortunately, the chemical bond with this material requires that for a twenty-four hour period, that the ground that it's installed on and where it is has a forty-degree temperature. And that is what is our challenge, uh, given our delays, is that unless we have an Indian summer come forward in the middle of December, that our weatherman can forecast for us with some level of certainty, um, that we may have to.
On vacation.
Well, that's why I said December when you get back. Um, that, uh, it may be that we have to push off putting the resilient surface down until the spring. And, um, you know, it'll be done the first thing in the spring, um, it's not where we wanna be, but again, sometimes things are out of our control, and we do the best we can. Keep in mind, that we have limited staff. We just finished a, a new elementary school, we just finished complete renovation of the middle high school with doors, windows, boilers, we just built a turf field. Um, we're, you know, just finished the police sta- fire station before that, we're now going forward with a police station. We're going through with all the design elements for the HVA system for our, uh, library system, so we have a lot of things going on, and we have very few staff to do it, so, uh, everyone's working their hardest, and I would appreciate, uh, full support, full support from the Board of Selectmen for your town staff.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, could I please, to address those statements, I think that one of the other issues that people have is, uh, the comments about the delays, all right, that it keeps coming at the, the lawsuit, the lawsuit, the lawsuit, and those don't need, we need to move on. Okay, and it seems like some people can't.
Why do you bring that up on Facebook? Let me just ask you that, okay, I'm making a fact statement.
All right, guys, guys, look, I'm, I'm getting off of Facebook because it is gonna be the end and ruin of Western civilization. So I, I tell everybody, stay away from Facebook. I mean, I know it's free speech, but there's also responsible free speech, and that is sorely missing in all aspects of American life today, where people get the cowards of the keyboard say anything they want, don't get me into the Facebook rant.
Okay, so.
So can I?
So, no, no, we're gonna let it go, we're not gonna talk about it anymore, all right? We're done with Facebook tonight. No, we're done with Facebook, okay? Everyone be responsible, if you have questions, call people and ask them, you don't have to throw it out on Facebook, you don't have to respond to it on Facebook, talk to each other, I know it's a radical idea to, if you have a question, to throw it out there, but.
Be positive, what I'm saying is, is be positive when you post something on Facebook.
That applies to everybody.
It does, but when you turn around and you have the initial comments that we'll put out there, that wasn't positive.
And it applies to you as well.
And that needs to be adult.
Sometimes people take your comments as not being positive, Bob.
And I agree, and you're right, and I have to do better, all right?
And we'll all do better, and if everybody gets off Facebook, we wouldn't spend any more time talking about Facebook.
Don't we go to Twitter?
No.
I'm sorry, I couldn't resist.
So moving forward, Mr. Chairman, into organizational plan, capital plan, and budget process. Um, so what I'm looking to do is, uh, where we stand with that is, uh, we're looking at, uh, some organizational changes as a result of some of our consultant inputs with some of our department heads. Uh, my plan is to bring that to the Board of Selectmen. Had our first meeting in, um, November, I'm sorry, in December, on December third. At that point, um, we should be at a point where we'll have our final forecast, uh, for the ten years, we'll have a balanced budget for the town, and we'll also have our organizational changes, um, that are part of our continuous, uh, evaluation of how we deliver services in the town. And, uh, that's the date that we're looking forward, uh, for that.
Are we gonna get a highlight before, a preview before that, or?
No, it's all gonna be then, I'm not gonna be able to make the next meeting on the nineteenth, so, and we won't be ready by that time anyway, uh, so it'll be on the twenty-first.
Will it be in our packets that we receive ahead of time?
Um, yes, yes, we will have stuff in your packets ahead of time.
Okay. Let's move on to minutes, licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated, uh, by the chairman, forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. Um, we have a request for the use of town property, Samson's Pond by the Eastside Sport Fishing Club for May thirty-first, twenty twenty, they're getting out ahead of this, five thirty AM to eleven AM. Uh, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, do we have anything in our permits, uh, for these towns to make sure that we require them that their boats are clean before putting, putting them in our pond, to go ahead and make sure we're not bringing invasive species and things like that?
Have we, have we been at making, uh, uh, looking for them to have boats that are?
Sorry, just asking the boss.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I think it was determined at some point that that was not an issue anymore, and there was no way to police that unless you, um, hired people to do that.
I know Dave Robinson used to bring it up.
Yeah, and, but I think we could request that they wash their boats, we can't.
I would like to see at least a request, yeah.
Enforce that, but we can ask them to wash their boats before they come here.
All right, can we include, can we include that as a condition, well, if someone wants to make a motion to approve, they can include that as a request.
Can I just addition to have it as a requirement? The enforcement, I guess, is an issue, but it's, Sarah was saying, you put it on there as a requirement.
Okay.
I, I, I agree with that.
Yeah.
All right.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Uh, okay, our next meetings, uh, let's see, do we have any minutes tonight?
Nope.
Nope, okay, then our next meetings are eleven nineteen nineteen, twelve three nineteen, twelve seventeen, well, basically, two in December, uh, two in January, and one showing up so far in February, they may well be more than that because we're getting into budget season, and so everybody should be prepared that uh, the, the meeting schedule may be, uh, enhanced as we move forward. All right.
On the nineteenth, just for everyone's information, you will be setting the tax rate, um, piece, so you will have the assessors here with the recommendation for that, that's, that's an important meeting that that gets resolved.
Okay, so the assessors are in at the next meeting to set the tax rate?
Correct.
Well, they're in, so we can set, set the tax rate, they don't set the tax.
Well, they will have voted on their recommendation for us to set the tax.
Well, I said the assessors will be in to set the tax rate.
No, we, we set the rate.
I, I didn't mean by, I, I did not phrase it properly.
We didn't, we don't set the rate.
They're coming in to discuss the tax rate, which we will then set.
No, we don't set it, we set the split.
Well, we might decide to go with a single rate.
Right, but that's all we do.
As opposed to what?
The rate.
Moving on.
Moving on. Uh, does someone wanna read the motion to go into executive session?
I'll take it. Executive session exemption number three, motion, move to go into executive session in accordance with general laws, chapter thirty A, subsection twenty-one A, three, to discuss strategy in respect to litigation filed against the town, mass commission against discrimination lawsuit by Lynn Colback and Dorothy Pacino, and case num- from two thousand and seventeen regarding Marie Senior, and that, in the opinion of the chair, discussing this issue in an open public meeting would be, have a detrimental effect on the board's litigation position, and to reconvene in open session.
Which would that be?
Just the purpose of, let's not hear, just.
I know.
Purpose of closing out our meeting.
Correct. All right, this requires a roll call vote. Mr. Dunham?
Alan Dunham says aye.
Mark Townsend, aye.
Ron Clark, aye.
Sarah Hewen says aye.
Robert Belbin says aye.
That's it, we are closed for tonight, uh, thank you for joining us, we'll be back on, uh, Tuesday, November nineteenth.